I will call the regular meeting of Tuesday, May 7th, 2024. Order to be started. The pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance is as in the fire of the United States of America, and the children of our land for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty just as for all. Roll call.
Ms. Douglas?
Here.
Ms. Hayes. Mr. Harbach?
Here.
Ms. Sensi?
Here.
And Mr. Thompson?
Here.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move.
Second.
Any discussion?
I am going to move up the one, uh, Boy Scout resolution.
Sure. Move free. Roll call.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Sensi?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
And Mr. Harbach?
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of April 16th, 2024?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Harbach?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
And Ms. Sensi?
abstain.
Want to do that now?
Yeah.
So, um, we have a couple, uh, special, uh, resolutions this evening on the agenda. We have a Girl Scout Gold Award, and she's not here this evening, but we do have George Bach on earning his Eagle Scout Award. And I always like to read their resolution because of what they've put into, um, the project. Uh, so we're commending him on earning his Eagle Scout Award, whereas George Bach, a senior at Madison High School, is a member of Boy Scout Group 55. And whereas George has been awarded the Eagle Scout Award, the highest honor member of the Boy Scouts of Canada team. And George's Eagle Scout project was building a mobile craft and culinary cart for Madison Public Library to use in their various programs. It was completed with one hundred and twenty-one and a half service hours at an estimated cost of, I think it's twelve hundred and thirty-five dollars. Not right, not twelve thousand.
No.
There's an extra zero, no. Most of which, so we will get you a corrected resolution. Uh, was donated by local businesses. And whereas George's achievement is a source of great pride and accomplishment, not only to him, his family, and his troop, but to our entire community. Now, therefore be it resolved, Madison Local Board of Education commends and applauds George Bach for earning the prestigious Boy Scout Eagle Scout Award and living up to the ideals of the Boy Scout Pope.
I'll move. I'll second.
Any discussion? Would you like to say anything about the project?
Uh, do you guys have any questions about it? I can answer any questions you may have.
So, what type of things are they going to serve on this? Do they, if they have a plan?
So, it is going to be mostly used for culinary, help teach culinary literacy to those in the community who may need. And it's also going to be used for, if they're doing like, uh, demonstrating how to make crafts for either elderly or younger kids. They have something they can work on. You know, on the tables, you have to bend down, and it's at like waist height. You know, versus this is at a full-sized countertop height. So it's a nice work area. There's also like various camera mounting options, so they can live stream it. They can put up a giant, you know, projector, and people can see exactly what's happening in real time. There is running water in there. So it's completely mobile. So it's a five-gallon system of, for dirty water and three gallons for fresh. You can never overflow. There's a power strip. They, they just plug it into the wall, they got power. They can run convection ovens, hot plates, whatever they want on it. And it's completely mobile, it's got four locking wheels. Um, we took three prefab cabinets and framed them together, and then stained them, sanded it, uh, put a countertop on it, and a bunch from there.
It's huge. Have you seen pictures of it?
So the pictures on the libraries?
There is.
Yeah.
Okay. Lots to look.
So is this something that you found that, or something that you created?
A little bit of both. Uh, he had mentioned to me something called a Charlie cart, which is a company that makes these carts. It's about, like, three feet wide-ish, give or take. And they have a couple drawers and a good sink area, but the sink doesn't drain. Um, and these carts cost, I think it was like five thousand for them, which is almost four times the amount of what I did for mine. And my cart is almost double the size and has, has running water, has electrical. It has drawers that stay shut. It has all kinds of other more features that they were wanting. So I used that design and essentially made it my own, or improved on the things that I felt needed improvement on.
That's awesome.
That is awesome. Great job.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So now what are your, uh, post-graduation plans? Where do you have it?
I'm going to University of UNOH, Northwestern Ohio, in a month for medium heavy-duty diesel technology. I'll be there for a little over two years, as well as learning the class A C E L.
Awesome for you.
Seems like you have that, you know, mechanical side going for you. If you look at something. I will go ahead and give you this one, but, um, I will get you a new one with the correct dollar amount.
Thank you.
Okay? Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
That'd be great.
We actually, um, he didn't men- mention it, but at the Madison Library, Karen Kennedy was head of circulation at the library. She passed away. My husband grew up on the same street as her and like their kids and stuff, so they were close when they were kids. So we actually dedicated his cart to Karen Kennedy.
Oh.
Um, so it's the Karen Kennedy Craft and Voluntary Cart.
Oh.
That.
Yeah, her family came out and we had a whole thing with dedication on it.
Very nice. Looks like one of those TV shows. You know, with the news.
Yeah, yeah.
Put that card on the news.
I bet you could sell some.
And that's what he was like, they, they had like a, you know, like Ohio Library meeting. And a bunch of these libraries that had money for buying the shirts, and just telling them about how horrendous things were, things that weren't going well. Like, underneath the sink, I have a lot of granite flooring, so it just dirts water, it's not going to rot.
Yeah.
Like, I bought everything positive. Versus these other carts don't have stuff like that. So, once these libraries are going through several issues with those carts. Versus, I mean, he brought mine up at that meeting, and he just had a bunch of libraries, and like, man, we love them.
Oh, gosh, that is.
And he was like, you should go into making these. I was like, that was way too much time.
Well, it was more than five whole days of your life.
Yeah, well, going into everything, I mean, I was, between all the planning and all the paperwork, it goes under everything, it was probably close to six to seven months of me nonstop working on things. So.
Wow.
That's, that's amazing.
That's true.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
We know you have another award.
Yeah, we've got the robotics awards now.
Oh, okay.
So many awards, thank you so much.
Well, same, yeah, he was the camera player.
Senior ones next week, last week was a band ones.
Does he turn here?
Thank you guys, congratulations.
Appreciate it. Enjoyed hearing your name.
Nice seeing you.
So I think we need to vote now. Roll call please.
Uh, Mr. Harbach?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Ms. Hayes?
Um, abstain, because I don't know what we're voting on right this second, so I just came in.
And Ms. Sensi?
Yes.
Do I do the other two now?
Yeah. That's under the toward, no, the toward. So, um, every year, OSBA does a business honor roll, asking for people to nominate businesses in their communities that have, you know, gone above and beyond for our students in the schools. And Jeff emailed me, I don't know, I think, late January, February, and said, "How about nominating, uh, Dairy Queen and Madison Family Restaurant for all they do to, in our schools?" And I said, "What a great choice," because they, they really do, you know. Ricky Belcher has been there over and over and over again. You know, if you need ice cream, you go, you know, she, she helps out. And, uh, you know, we in turn buy a lot of ice cream. Usually try and buy a certain amount of gift cards when I start the year for, uh, my staff drawing and all of those kinds of things. And then, um, Mrs. Sani from Madison Family has just become one of those people that helps out too. You know, and does it for the, you know, the schools, the community. Uh, she's just a valuable partner, and she's got her mini-me coming to kindergarten next year. I mean, truly a mini-me. A Josh White. You know, we are very grateful to have, uh, these part, these community partners, and honoring them to the Ohio School Boards Association Business Honor Roll for their overall contributions to our school and exemplary service to our community. And so, I need a move, a motion and a second.
I'll move.
A second.
Discussion? Thank you very much. Thank you for everything you guys did.
We have big plans for next school year. We already have a plan going on, and, uh, so this, this year, we're more focused on elementary, middle school. This coming year, we're going to do bigger things for high school, South Elementary, pre-K in here, and of course, North Elementary and, um, middle school. So, we're trying to help around as much as we can.
Well.
He has did great job.
Yeah, yeah. Absolutely, very much.
We see both the names of schools.
Yeah, so we're so blessed, because, you know, when y'all became our neighbors, it was just wonderful. You know, I mean, we live right next to each other, so, um, and I get to see her littles every day.
Every single day.
Thank you all so much for the consideration and kindness, and, you know, I really greatly appreciate that. And we're here for you all the time. I think I've already fielded about three frantic phone calls in the last two days. I hate this funny deli bar. So pretty sure we got, we got some going everywhere, just, you know, west.
It is, it is fast season.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, we have, um, we took the certificate that OSBA, uh, gave us, and we made it into a plaque, so that you can actually display it, whether you want to have it sitting somewhere, you can either hang it, or there's the little thing inside, uh, okay? So we have one for Madison Family, and we also have the board resolution in the board. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time, Ross.
Thank you.
I think there's one thing about this community. Many people, I mean, she's, get the list of people that donated a little bit, and it's just every month, how much people just keep giving back. And then, I just think, as much as we have, people want to be negative sometimes, but there is so much positive that people, the community just keep giving back, you know, and just thank you guys for doing everything you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Sensi?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Ms. Hayes?
Yes.
And Mr. Harbach?
Yes.
I have one other piece under this, uh, the board number reports. Um, OSBA, every spring, gives out service awards at their regional meeting. And, um, our Michelle was not able to go, Ms. Ashley. But I thought, I decided that I would go through, uh, various minutes to talk about her different roles in her fifteen years of service to the board. So, she was first elected board in November 2009, so she was sworn in in January of 2010. She was the only member of the current board that was part of the bond issue, bond issue campaign for the new buildings. She has served as a legislative liaison for the district at OSBA in 2010. She served as board president in 2016 and 17. She's been vice president since, for bring 2018 to the present. And she has served as student achievement liaison in 2018 and 2020 to 2023. I don't know what happened in 2019, we must not have nominated somebody for student achievement, because there were no student achievement liaisons in the minutes, but, um, so on behalf of OSBA, we have a certificate and a flower show here as well. Congratulations on those flowers. Wow, daughter's flowers always does a really, really wonderful job. They're beautiful, those are. They really are beautiful. They last quite a while, too. Very pretty. Well, thank you very much. Thank you. Were it's a wisdom man for fifteen years? Well, um, I don't know. You know, just today, as I was leaving work, um, uh, one of my coworkers had said, "Are you, uh, this is going to be your last year." And I said, "Well, no, technically, next year would be my last year." And they said, "So you're not going to run again?" And I said, "You know, I never, I really don't ever make up my mind until about two weeks before the deadline comes." And it, um, is usually determined on whether or not we have people step up. You know, it's, it's, it... There are good points and bad points to everything that you do. This has been very rewarding over the years. There's been a lot of heartbreak and difficult decisions over the years. But it's, it's well worth it, and somebody has to do it. So, if you're thinking that you would like to get involved and, and, uh, you know, help make the decisions that determine the direction of education in our district, um, then contact me and I'll fill you in. And of course, graduation is coming up, and that makes it worth it every year.
Every year?
The graduation day is always filled with just so much excitement, and people are so happy and excited, and it's bittersweet moment, because you're seeing all these kids that you've seen for years, and now they're moving on, and you're happy for them, and at the same time, you're looking at them like, how did they get so big? Where did all the time go? And, uh, but it's a great day, and, uh, it's a great privilege to be able to pass out those diplomas, it really is. That's all.
Are there any board members who would want to give a report this evening? We don't have anyone registered for public participation, so reports and recommendations of the treasurer.
Thank you. Um, first, I would like to recommend the financials for April 2024.
I'll move. One second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Harbach?
Yes.
Ms. Sensi?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Ms. Hayes?
Yes.
And Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Motion's passed. Uh, next, I would like to recommend the approval of the following donations. To accept a generous donation of thirty-five hundred dollars from Just-in-Time Staffing, owned by the Donato Foundation Incorporated, to Madison High School Principals Fund to be used for student fees. To accept a generous donation of a thousand dollars from the William J. Fisher to Madison High School Workforce Scholarship. To accept a generous donation of a hundred dollars from Christie's Quitters Pet Brewing to Madison High School National Honor Society to be used for the Blue Street Walk Party. To accept a generous donation of fifty dollars from Wicker Gardens to Madison High School National Honor Society to be used for the Blue Street Walk Party. To accept a generous donation of two hundred and twenty-five dollars from Progressive Insurance Foundation to South Elementary School to be used as needed. To accept a generous donation of gift cards from Arby's for a free sandwich to Madison Local Schools for Staff Appreciation Week. To accept a generous donation of gift cards from Arby's for a free slider to Madison Middle School to be given to students. And to accept a generous donation of lunch from Madison Subway to Madison Middle School for, Madison Middle School Staff for Teacher Appreciation Week.
I'll move. Second. Any discussion? Thank you very much to all the people who donated. Roll call please.
Ms. Sensi?
Yes.
Mr. Harbach?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Ms. Hayes?
Yes.
And Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Yeah, yes. Miss Graff, how's the Black Party going? Since I put, I'm sorry.
No, it's fine.
As I saw the Black Party thing come up, I'm like, forget it, is it going?
Uh, yeah, so it's a lot different this year, um, so far. Uh, we're doing a lot more in-house, this is the first year we've gotten sponsors. We've gotten quite a bit. So we have inflatable's, we have a whole, like, two or three obstacle course things together. We have inflatable ax throwing, not real ones. We have, um, one band already booked. And then we also have, um, almost booked one of our students at the high school, who's going to perform for two hours, actually, with her band. We're just finalizing paperwork on that. So we have a lot of things, similar things, we have balloon twisting. It don't call balloon animals anymore, it's balloon twisting. Dunk tank, snow cones, cotton candy, things like that. So, we're changing it around, so it won't be set up the same way. We're still going to do the parade, um, so that information will be going out soon for people to sign up. We're still doing the craft vendor show, but they'll all be in the front this time, because wind was, um, definitely a challenge last year. And then, we're also doing stuff inside this year. So all of the kids' games that we had, wind, like, crushed us with that. And so we're moving those into the gym. Um, and then we also have, um, reverse raffle. We have a bunch of baskets that, um, we're going to be raffling up. So it's a combination of inside, outside, um, so it's, it's getting there, it's a lot of work.
He did phenomenal job last year.
The rain just that one hour.
Yeah.
So, hoping this year will hold that up.
It wasn't a little rain either.
No, it was, it was quite a downpour. But we got a lot of really positive feedback last year. In fact, the only negative feedback we got, and I sent surveys out to everybody involved and everybody except for two people out of, I think it was like two hundred and fifty people, filled it out. And we only got, the only negative feedback was the wind and the rain, which we can't control. So, um, to accommodate that this year, we're going to put some stuff inside. So, I think that was a big part of last year, when the rain came and it came fast and hard. People didn't realize they could go inside, even though we're telling people it was still, there wasn't anything else inside. So we're going to try and do that, which is what's causing us to shift everything around, because we can't block that front door for fire code if you were inside. So, most of it's going to be on the, the backside of the school, which might be a little bit more considered to some of the across-the-street neighbors as well. So, yeah, it's coming along.
Yeah, it's the twenty-fourth of August, right?
Yeah, so we also moved it back a week. So instead of doing the Saturday right before we start school, it's moved to the Saturday after we start school, because we ran into a lot of, um, last minute, I have to get my last vacation in before school starts again, issues. Um, and it's a little bit easier for the band and some of the other groups, so we'll have at least a week-ish of kids coming back where we can communicate last minute things.
And then, the Perry game is home the night before, so, you know.
And we're not conflicting with the Asheville County Fair, I believe, this year. Only we were last year, and Concord Community Days, so we tried to avoid some of those conflicts.
Thank you for all your hard work.
We're adding more stuff if it comes, as we can.
Thank you.
I have quite a few things to talk about tonight, so, um, one, it's Teacher and Staff Appreciation Week, and there's all sorts of activities celebrating our wonderful staff around the district. This week, lots of lunches, lots of breakfast, K K O's, have done lots of treats. Dave and I have something going out to staff this week as well, so, um, you know, it's, it's always good to celebrate our staff who work so hard for our students and give so much back, um, to, you know, to help these kids succeed. It's a thankless job, truly is. Planning for next year is underway. Right now, we are up to one hundred and twenty kindergarten students, and believe it or not, I have idiot north. So that means I have got four classrooms there. For whatever reason, South is not coming in very fast. It used to be reversed. South would be the first group in, you know, I'd know those numbers, they'd be firm. Um, north would be my stragglers. So if I've got idiot north now, I'm hoping that it doesn't go up over that one hundred and some odd mark, because I may have to shift some things around. So we'll be watching these numbers closely all summer. I do want to give a big shout-out to the boys' baseball team on capturing a share of the CVC title. B.J. texted me last night, and he was trying to find out the last time the baseball team won a title, and he, it goes back at least thirty, if not forty years. Really? I wonder, do you have them now?
Um, no, but I know they're playing right now, if they win tonight, they actually don't have to share it.
Okay.
So if they win tonight, they are the conference champions.
Which is, is very exciting, I mean.
It truly is.
I, I think the move to the CVC overall was a very good move for our district. You know, we're, we're competing with like schools and.
Did you go to state?
Nineteen eighty. Nineteen eighty?
Yeah, B.J. posted it on, so I just read that.
What year? That was your score right there?
Wow.
It was way back in nineteen eighty. It was a forty-four-year drought overturns.
That's pretty awesome.
Forty-four years.
Forty-four years.
My math was a math bee, wasn't it?
So prom's cool things too. And you can't discount all the work he's put into that program, um, you know, with his electro, you know, his batting cages, you know, with the computerized hitting, and, you know, all that kind of stuff. He's really worked with these kids and, and, and really built that team concept. So, congratulations to them. You know, we've had several award programs so far, and prom was wonderful over the weekend. They were all successful. Next week, we have the eighth grade honors breakfast on Tuesday morning, senior awards on Wednesday night, and graduation on Saturday to two hundred and six potential graduates.
That's a ten o'clock?
Mm-hmm, but you want to get there, you know.
About nine thirty?
Yeah, nine, between nine and nine-thirty. And the big news, and I'm not sure if they're on this agenda, if we're, you know, we can put them on the next, uh, regular meeting agenda, but we have two custodians who have cleared their background checks. They are going to start within the next week. And both, I met both of them, we checked their references, nothing but good things to be said. So, we're getting somewhere. And we've got a few good senior, uh, students that are graduating that are going to, you know, sub, help out, and, you know, be a part of that, that team to help get these buildings clean for next quarter. All right, um, I'll let you guys choose where we go next. I have the land discussion, and I also have a strategic plan overview. So, you want to talk about the land?
Yeah.
Okay. So, I wanted to give you guys, and the land we're talking about is the Bennetler property, where the softball league used to have, um, you know, ran their league out of, and they maintain the land. So when we did this, when we sold, and we talked about selling this land, but since that time, this land has become very popular for softball. So, uh, when we did this in two thousand and four, I went, I went back and I looked at the contracts and looked at some of the fees. Now, our fees wouldn't be quite as much, because we're not selling as much value. But there was a minimum bid on each parcel, so the north and then the south. And south was broken up into two parcels, one parcel behind beams, and then one parcel, it was four parcels originally. We had to pay marketing fees as well as a percentage to the auctioneer upon completion of the auction. Fees in two thousand and fourteen for the auctioneer we chose were twelve thousand five hundred for marketing, and then ten percent of the sale price at auction. According to the county website, our land is currently valued at a hundred and ninety-four thousand. We've had it surveyed, so that if we go to auction, we would have clear boundaries. We did do that, so that we knew exactly where our boundaries end. Because we're going to have to sort of, like, there's some discussion with some of those neighbors, because they, you know, they have encroached a little bit on that land to where our boundaries are. Land does have sewer, uh, it needs water, which would be a tap-in for any development. It does have electric on the land. We have several cross softball groups interested in working together with the rec board to maintain the land and use it for both fast and slow pitch programs. So we can go either way here. And that, I've settled along, is your decision is of worth, tell me what you want me to do, if we want to pursue auction, or if we want to, at this point, let these community groups use it this summer and revisit this in the future.
Who's going to maintain it, so?
These different softball leagues are all going to work together. Um, there's one that is a slow pitch league out of Willoughby. Uh, there's a fast pitch league here in Madison, and they are, they want to work together to maintain.
Is there a commitment from them?
Yeah. They've asked, they've filled out, um, facility use work, paperwork on everything already.
I'm good with letting people.
So.
If we wanted to sell it, though, we do have to go through this. If we wanted to sell it though, we do have to go through this auction process. We can't just put it on the market and see what comes in and then make a decision.
And there would be attorney fees, because I would have them look at the contracts and those types of thing. You can't just sell it, your board policy is pretty much outlined here in Ohio, you know, it's Ohio Vice Code. So, any real property over ten thousand dollars has to go through this auction process.
Are any of these organizations community-based, student-related, or are they?
No, they're, they're community softball, they're not.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, but I think our contract.
It's not Madison Rec.
Madison Rec is sort of helping facilitate.
Okay. Because they kind of, they kind of left it, right? They, they don't.
No, no, they, Madison Rec wasn't the group that ran.
They, okay, okay.
No, that was a different softball league altogether.
I gotta get them all.
So, they went, they approached the rec board.
Gotcha.
John is this, you know, is on the rec board, and, you know, has worked with all three groups that wanna work together to maintain it. You know, they'll brush hog it, they'll brush hog it tomorrow, if we let.
Oh, yeah.
And they've got, they've got insurance, so.
Better than just sitting there.
And we're gonna take it to the church and the church.
Well, I, I think, when you look at what the value is, that's what the auditor says, right? So, people that might want to go to auction, now, it does butt up against a piece of Petiti properties, Pat told me, and they bought some of Green Farm, um, but they bought it directly, you know. If we go to auction, yeah, you have to put a reserve on it when you go to auction. So, you have to put what you're willing to accept, right? So, you may not get one hundred and ninety-four thousand.
We, I mean, I mean, that's one option, is we give a amount that we won't go any below, and if we don't get it, we give, we have them utilize it.
But I'm still, but we still pay all that marketing fees and attorney fees.
And then we're out there.
Then we make up for that in place. Two fifty.
Um, I'm good with letting them, uh, the community groups continue to utilize the fields. Um, I have a question though, because, you know, something that you sent out to us, it said something about we own thirty acres on Green Road?
No, no, that's Petiti sold, bought thirty acres on Green Road, the Green Road property, we don't own.
Oh.
I write that we've got.
Okay. I was confused by that, because I thought it said that we, I, I must've read that wrong, so, okay. So, we own no other property that is not used other than Bennett Road.
That's it.
Okay.
All right, so Michelle said she'd like to go ahead and just do it with the, uh, group, so you guys all comfortable in that? As long as they maintain it, that's the thing. We don't wanna let it.
We'll, we'll talk to them about, right, maintaining it, yeah. Um, you know, Pat brush hogged it in the fall, but now it's, you know, summer and.
I would like to know, like, um, though, uh, what's, like, how many year commitments are we, are they giving us? Are we willing to give them? I mean, we do need to have a little bit of, um, information, you know, regarding.
And I, I may talk to them about doing the same kinda thing, where instead of doing a building use or facility use, they con, take the contract that the old league did, that has all that information in it. So, I will work on that with those groups. Okay. All right. Next item is, and I'm just gonna go through it real quick, cause I've sent it out to you. And you, we'll do a full adoption at the first meeting in June. But I wanted to at least go over, uh, the thirty thousand foot view of the strategic plan. This was formed through focus groups, community survey, and working with Impact Group and our administrative team. Board, you know, the board members, they, they put together a plan that has five goal areas. The first is enhance communication, and there are then, under those, five objectives. And, you know, some of them, one of them is expand community partnerships. So, celebrating some of these things that, like, we, we do already. Looking for some more standardized internal communication. Continue to work on that website, I found some things I didn't like today that we're going to fix. Address facility and infrastructure needs with clear communication, and work on, uh, strengthening our internal communication. So, that's the enhanced communication. And what will happen with each of these goals and objective groups is that we met administratively and different administrators to point on each of these goals. And then they're gonna set baselines, and from there, recommended action steps, and what that plan implementation looks like.
Brian, did you hear how many times you were nominated to do it?
Not yet, I haven't, I haven't, I haven't quite. Yes, you were nominated.
Don't tell them yet.
Um, the next one is empower and develop staff. So, uh, you know, looking at, the first objective is a well-equipped cohesive staff proficient in addressing the diversity of the students and community, and that's, you know, all staff. We're not just talking about teachers, it's administrators, support staff, everybody that works with our students. Enhance staff well-being, improve overall staff well-being, we need to increase job satisfaction, reduce turnover, and a more positive school environment. And in working with, uh, our healthcare consortium, we are looking at ways to change what we do for wellness. Because, you know, it, it, it's painful to get people to, you know, do those minimum tests, work with the coding, but there's all sorts of programs now in metrics that, that can help, so we're gonna be looking at those. Cultivate a culture of appreciation, so, uh, where staff feel valued, evaluated, motivated, contribute to higher levels of engagement, satisfaction, and retention across the district. So, those are our three under, uh, empower and develop staff. And then I'm not gonna go through all nine objectives, but the heart of what we do is curriculum, programming, and what we provide to kids. You know, so we are looking at their mental health, their well-being, curriculum, um, and, and providing, you know, an articulated curriculum, I know a lot, we've done with literacy this year. We've looked at the lower level, we're scaling it up to the middle school, and ultimately, we're gonna scale it up to the high school. We're gonna look at some of our, um, discipline policies, um, we're going to enhance school spirit. You know, so there, there are career exploration opportunities, working on our transition to high school. So, that, those are also big pieces. Optimize facilities and operations. So, this is where we start to look at some of these big nuggets that are, that are costly on top of just general operating dollars, right? So, looking at a comprehensive facilities analysis, especially with our older buildings, you know, and, and seeing what the community will support in that regard. Looking at our technology infrastructure, and, and really having a true technology plan that we're not just piecemealing when we have money. Security and safety evaluation, we do that regularly, so that is, um, pretty, uh, huge. And then we have, um, a, I think the financial transparency, transparency and community engagement. Cause community has to really understand where our finances are and what they want in their schools. And, you know, at some point, that, you know, they're gonna have to decide if it's, you know, another, another tax levy, or is it a bond issue, or is it a, a permanent improvement levy, which then would take the burden of certain things off the general fund, and it kinda works the same way. Because our permanent improvement levy that collects barely a hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars can't even buy us a bus and a piece of parking lot or a piece of a road. You know, it can't buy us, it may be able to buy us a bus and one, um, grade level of Chromebooks. But you have a boiler go down in the buildings that don't have the extra half mil from the bond issue. The two buildings still have that, but here, if something goes down, we're paying for it out of general fund. And then that takes away from other things. So, um, you know, then you're looking at enhancing financial communication to the community and the exploration for alternative funding. So, it's quite a lofty plan, but the dorm wasn't built for day, it's a three-year plan. Impact will come back next year and, uh, you know, check in with us and let us know what steps we need to take, which tweaks we need to make. But I appreciate the work that they did in such a short timeframe, timeframe to put the plan together. Questions? Let's get to Ray, that'll make me get busy, it's the only thing, cause, you know, it's, it's a little busy this time of year. Okay. Dave, do you have anything tonight?
I do not.
Oh, you can.
Can I talk about the Franklin B. Walter?
Oh, yes you can, ooh, I forgot about that.
So, I would like to, um.
We have fabulous. Bye, thank you so much.
We have, um, fabulous special education staff. I've worked in a couple districts, and I've always said that collectively, our intervention specialists, our educational aides, and all of our, you know, school sites and OTs and PTOs have been wonderful. And so every year, the Lake Geogee County Education Service Center. Um, has, uh, two awards that they ask each of the school districts for nominations. Uh, one of them is for an outstanding student who has exhibited extra, um, through whatever, comfort, whatever, trauma or obstacles that they have, um, persevered. And so I ask each of the, um, principals to come up with a nomination of students. And then those names, um, we kind of have a little process of, uh, going through, and then we sort, you know, we are able to give one to the Lake Geogee County. Then there is one for teachers. And so I ask all of the building principals to nominate a teacher and intervention specialist. And this year's award, um, or this year's person that was nominated for our district was Mr. Mark McNamara, who is an intervention specialist at middle school, who works with our very, our students who are emotionally dysregulated. And it's a very tough group of kids. And so, Mr. Whaley and I crafted, uh, a letter that, you know, for his nomination. And in fact, he was chosen out of all of Lake Geogee counties, so.
Wow.
Yes, so I just wanna read just a teeny bit of, um, what this word is. When I got the, the news, I was like, I called Angela, and I was like, ah, you know, shaking. And it was, it was just such a proud, um, moment for, um, just for our district. We have so many very worthy, grateful, I mean, wonderful, I'm grateful for all of us there.
And Carrie Kish received that award several years ago.
Yes, so we have some pretty recognizable, um, staff members in, uh, Madison. Um, so this is named in honor of the late Dr. Franklin B. Walter Superintendent of Public Instruction from nineteen ninety, uh, nineteen seventy-seven to ninety-one, a post held longer than any other state superintendent in Ohio's history. Over fifty years of service as a teacher and administrator. Dr. Walter's leadership is evident in many of Ohio's quality educational initiatives and programs. Among these is the development of the nation's first statewide plan for children with disabilities. On behalf of the State Support Team Four and the Walter Warren Awards Committee, I'd like to congratulate you on being selected as the twenty-twenty-four Franklin B. Walter Outstanding Education Award winner for Lake Geogee counties. You will be invited to participate in an award ceremony on June eleventh for information. And so, just the, um, letter, I think, is important for us to also, um, just so that you can know a little bit about Mr. McNamara, we call him Fondly Mac. Um, he came to us three years ago, I think. He's had a career in different, um, in different districts, he's been coaching, he's had a lot of different roles. He's also been a special education supervisor, and so we were fortunate to have him become part of our staff. Um, in the, in the few years Mr. McNamara has been with the district, he has been a valuable asset to NMS, because he built the model classroom for our students who need social, emotional, and behavior support. Mr. Mac, as the kids call him, loves to help support the needs of all of the students. He has a number of hands-on projects he does in his life skills class to get the kids working as a team. He assigns them different responsibilities, and the teamwork is nice to see. The kids got to build cornhole boards as a group, and they got to use them. He also catered a Thanksgiving dinner for the staff, and his kids served meals to everyone. The pride they had serving us was so cool to see. Most of what you can tell, this is Mr. Whaley talking, so. Most importantly, Mr. Mac used his own money to construct a special space in his classroom designated for students who need a quiet, safe space to de-escalate and process their emotions. It is a tent structure with soft lighting, a beanbag, and other items to help a student decompress when they are stressed. Students trust him and know they can talk to him about anything. Mr. Mac has built strong relationships with the staff, administration, and all of his students. We are lucky to have such a caring, competent, and supportive intervention specialist in our district. Mr. Mac is also asked to help the administration cover school events. He understands the importance of being visible throughout the school day, as well as extracurricular activities. He has excellent communication skills with parents. Of his students that earn him trust and respect. He makes pancakes for almost all the holidays, and his kids are learning proper social skills. Not only teaches them content, but real words, real world skills that help students grow. In addition, Mr. McNamara is passionate about students outside of school, many years he has coached. He volunteers time to plan fundraisers and find sponsors, so that students have the materials they need. He is very deserving of this award. One of the other little side facts to that, um, so, it's hard sometimes when you walk past the rooms of the students who are in smaller settings. It's not always understandable to see, like, kids are kinda screaming, or they're eating, or they're not doing the typical things that you would see in a general education classroom. So, sometimes people question, oh, what's really going on in those rooms? You know, is there learning taking place? It's hard to tell, you know? And so, whenever I have the opportunity to go in, just to see the pride that some of these kids take, um, I'm such a baby. It's just so, it's so rewarding. And when he made this, the structure, it's like the tent, and again, it's very unconventional. But it's a really neat tent, and he, you know, he paid for it, you know, with his own money, you know, he and his daughter. And they went to Lowe's in Willoughby, I think it was, maybe it was better. And so they got all of this material, and they were gonna go build it at the middle school. Well, it didn't fit in their car. And so he was trying to finagle things or whatever, and this gentleman came up to him and said, oh, well, you know, where are you going with this? And he said, oh, well, I'm going up to Madison. And this, the gentleman said, well, that's where I live. And so it was so neat, cause then he, you know, backed him up, and so it was just really neat. So, it was, um, so it, it's just a really, uh, wonderful, um, opportunity to showcase somebody who really, um, works hard with our hardest students, and so. Then I have one other thing, uh, our summer plans, that's what I've been really, really working on, is trying to get, so we're using our last bit, I think, of, of funding for extension activities for students who were recommended by teachers who might need some reinforcement activities over the summer. So, right now, we have about a hundred, um, elementary students, and that will be our biggest group yet. And I have to thank Mr. Baker, who is up, so I always have a team of people with all of the different things, I guess, going on. So, many thanks to Mr. Baker, he was able. different things, like, of going on, so many thanks to Mr. Baker, he was able to get the, uh, signups kind of going, and Kim Boggs, who is our transportation extraordinaire, I don't know how she works magic, so, she's been very, 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 um, patient and supportive, and then, um, we're working with Melanie Little at the library, and so we have the programs that we've done the last few years, and then this year, the Cleveland Food Bank, they have a site, so they will be serving food, uh, lunches this, this year, and, and they'll be one of the sites in Lake County, and so they'll actually be doing, um, working with Kelly Kaminsky, who worked her magic to find all the brands for the kids to eat for free, so, um, between those two, so it was, and then, uh, Mr. Bergard, I'm almost ready to hand over, and then I will say goodbye to that, and then, um, the middle school, we didn't have, um, a, a program last year, it's kind of difficult with especially middle school kids, because they don't get credit, who cares, they don't, you know, so, um, I really felt like we really needed to do something for our middle school kids, because there's, you know, that's such a tough age, and, and so, um, Mr. Dragus at the high school, and I and his wife and a couple other teachers really are thinking outside of the box to just give students an opportunity that's gonna all be experience-based and project-based, and so it's not, we're not saying it's summer school, it's just a program to do fun things that hopefully to, those soft skills and just keeping them busy. And then the high school is, uh, credit recovery, and Mrs. Bean is responsible for that, so, um, yeah, so stay tuned, June will be a busy one outside of school here.
Ready for the record?
Sure.
Okay. Uh, we're asking you into the employment contracts to approve the following resignations, accept the resignation of Ashley Glovna, Special Needs Assistant at North Elementary, effective May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four, to accept the resignation of Julio Gutierrez as Madison High School Head Soccer Coach, effective May seventh, twenty twenty-four, we're asking you to enter into the following employment contracts, uh, following substitute teachers is approved by the Educational Service Center of the Western Reserve and within Madison Local School District Superintendent, Christie Diaz and Darlene Mahelli, to employ Patricia Uhas as a building substitute at South Elementary, effective April fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, to employ Tabogen, uh, Kate Pybar as a second shift custodian at Madison Middle School at a compensation of sixteen ninety-six per hour, effective May twentieth, twenty twenty-four, we're asking you to approve the following casual day-to-day substitutes, that the board have approved, uh, rate of compensation, Christine Camarere. We're asking you to approve the following creative rates for those casual substitute positions, effective May sixth, twenty twenty-four, so, instead of one flat rate, we're taking it to the spec zero on the base, so educational assistant, cafeteria, playground, and classroom, ten sixty-seven, special needs assistant, eleven seventy-five, custodian, thirteen twenty-five, secretary, thirteen twelve, nutrition services cashier and helper, eleven eighty-five. And that is the employment motion this evening.
Any discussion?
Mr. Harbaugh?
Yes.
Mrs. Sensi?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Ms. Hayes?
Yes.
And Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
And we're asking you to approve a memorandum of understanding to enter in with the MEA to outsource for a part-time psychologist for the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Come on.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Sensi?
Yes.
Mr. Harbaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Ms. Hayes?
Yes.
And Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Okay, and even though we don't have Morgan Brats here, and we've got her resolution, I'm going to go ahead and, and read her resolution in its entirety this evening. Uh, whereas the highest rank a young woman can earn is a member of the Girl Scouts of Northeast Ohio, is the Girl Scout Gold Award, an honor attained by a one-time Girl Scout's time, leadership, creativity, and contribution to making the world a better place, whereas Morgan Brats is a twenty twenty-three graduate of Madison High School, where she is, was a member of the swim team, marching band, and robotics club, and is currently attending the Ohio State University for Mechanical Engineering, and whereas Morgan is also a member of Girl Scout Troop Seventy, Seventy-Eight, E-two in the Girl Scouts of Northeast Ohio, and whereas Morgan worked with her school in ecology class to educate people on the importance of bats, and whereas Morgan worked with a team and constructed fifteen back boxes that hang throughout the surrounding area. A gold award celebration will take place on June twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four to present Morgan with this prestigious award and with all the rank and privileges appertaining thereto. And whereas Morgan's achievement is a source of pride and accomplishment, not only to her family and troop, but also to our entire community, now therefore being results of Matheson Local Board of Education, commends and applauds Morgan Brats for earning the prestigious gold award and living up to the ideals of the Girl Scout oath. Let's go.
Any discussion?
Congratulations, Morgan, yeah, good job.
Roll call.
Mr. Harbaugh?
Yes.
Mrs. Sensi?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Ms. Hayes?
Yes.
And Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
All right, and then there is the Teacher Appreciation Week Resolution, and it's the resolution declaring Teacher Appreciation Week in the school district, it's the annual resolution that, um, is done every year.
I'll move.
Oh, second.
Any discussion?
Just once again, thank you to our teachers.
Yes, thank you.
To the teachers.
It's a fabulous, we do fabulous group of adults who work together.
Mm-hmm. We really do.
Roll call.
Uh, Ms. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Harbaugh?
Yes.
And Mrs. Sensi?
Yes.
All right, and here's our annual, uh, motion to approve the graduates, so we're asking you to approve the list of seniors for graduation from Madison High School, May eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, the board grants the administration the authority to remove from the list the name of any student who does not meet the graduation requirements established in Board Policy Fifty-two Hundred, whereas excessive absence or unexcused absences or tardies as defined in Board Policy Fifty-two Hundred, who, or who demonstrates improper behavior as defined by Board Policy Fifty-five Hundred.
I'll move.
Second. Any discussion? Congratulations to the graduates.
Yes, absolutely, congratulations.
Mrs. Sensi?
Yes.
Mr. Harbaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Ms. Hayes?
Yes.
And Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
All right, the consent calendar this evening has several items on it, to approve an out-of-state trip to the Uris Zoo in Pennsylvania for the BLL campus students on June eleventh, twenty twenty-four, at no cost to the students, to enter a, into an agreement with the Lake Geogga Educational Assistance Foundation, effective the twenty twenty-three, um, twenty-four school year to assist, I think it's the twenty-four, twenty-five, she didn't change the motion, so twenty twenty-four, twenty-five school year to assist high school seniors in financial aid planning for post-secondary education at a cost of fifteen thousand dollars, to enter into an agreement between, um, LGCA for Infinite Campus Administration, Madison Local Schools for five thousand dollars, effective July first, twenty twenty-three, and through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, to enter into an agreement between LGCA for Grand Data Analytics and Madison Local Schools, effective July first, twenty twenty-three, and through June twenty twenty-four.
Should those dates be twenty-four and twenty-five?
Yeah, because LGCA no longer exists, and this was part of their cleanup on things as they were going through. To approve the addendum with the ESC of the Western Reserve for staffing and programs for the twenty twenty-four school year, as found on file at the board office, and to approve the sale of bus number four to two twelve Blue Streets LLP for fifteen hundred dollars.
I'll move.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Sensi?
Yes.
Mr. Harbaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Ms. Hayes?
Yes.
And Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
We do have a need for executive session tonight, so if I have a motion to go into executive session for purposes of the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of public employees or regulated individuals.
I'll move, second.
Uh, we will not be, um, conducting any business when we return from executive session, it will simply be, um, adjourned. Roll call.
Ms. Hayes?
Yes.
Mrs. Sensi?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Harbaugh?
Yes.
And Mr. Thompson?
Yes.